Okay, you ready to go Steve? All right, I'd like to welcome everybody to the Ogden Valley Planning Commission pre-meeting for July 27th, 2021. Let's go ahead and look through some of our considerations tonight Felix, I don't know if you'd like to start? If you'd like, or who's doing the first one here? Maybe Scott, either way, I just saw Felix up there, so.
Yep, so the first one on the agenda is a design review for the expansion of a couple of parking lots up at Snow Basin. Can you guys hear me okay? Better, better, sorry this mic got pretty close. So it's a design review consideration for the expansion of a couple of parking lots up at Snow Basin. So it's the Maples Parking Lot and the Canyon Rim Parking Lot. So we're looking to add a total of 346 stalls, 91 in the Canyon Rim Lot and 255 in the Maples Lot. These are, these parking lots, they do intend to pave them, they do intend to have assistance during loading and unloading of the parking lot during seasonal operations. There's no lighting, just mild landscaping to reseed some of the the cut and fill slopes to accommodate these lots. Stormwater is being considered by engineering. But in whole, it matches the master plan for the area. They are temporary in nature in that the, the area where these parking lots are being installed, they're also intended as development parcels for future hotels, condos, those sorts of things. So they're somewhat temporary, but they will be paved. They do have stormwater consideration and they do have light landscaping to match the master plan. Do you guys have any questions on the overall premise of the project?
Questions on this? When are they gonna start their project?
Well, that's up to them to decide, we don't know. And others, it's quite a bit of discussion, but we haven't been given, given any timelines. Yeah, we've got a representative here with who designed the parking lot, so they may know more than I. Any questions on that one?
Okay, thanks Scott. Maybe the second one on Asgard?
Yeah, let me actually pull up. I'm just getting connected to Zoom here. Marty, can you give me sharing capability? Okay, I'll pull up the preliminary plan for this subdivision so you can take a look at what in that. Okay, so this project is being called the Asgard Subdivision or the Asgard Heights Subdivision. It's kind of in the Nordic Valley area, kind of connected off of Nordic Meadows Drive in the middle and then on the, the south border Nordic Valley Road. And the total property areas, it's a little over 18 acres, actually it's a little bit closer to 19 acres. And the applicant is looking to subdivide this into six lots. And the zoning in the area, F E 3 A B 3s requires three acre minimum with 150 foot widths. And so the, the quick observer will notice that the majority of those lots meet those zoning minimums with exception to lot one. And if you'll recall, we recently passed a new section of code that allows for us to be slightly substandard in our within area if the developer is willing to provide desired connectivity. So what we're showing here is a connection of Nordic Meadows Drive over to the future expansion of Carroll Street, which extends southward. And the developer will be dedicating and installing that road as part of the subdivision, thereby qualifying for that lot one to be slightly substandard. So lot one is 2.84 acres instead of three. So that's really the unique aspect of this subdivision. We have some floodplain in the area, but the developer is working with FEMA on the Loma process to amend the map. So they're doing additional calculations and studies to shrink the actual effective floodplain from what you see in the light blue to what you see in the dark blue. And this will just open up an additional developable area and then lower the homeowner's insurance for flood insurance requirements. Do you guys have any questions on the overall premise of this subdivision?
It looks like there's three ways to get into these, these three blocks.
Well, so to the south, you have lots.
Valley.
Yeah.
Get in there.
Yep. It's Carroll Street on the north there. Yep, so lots four, or sorry, five and six will have frontage on Nordic Valley Road, which is already existing. And then lots three and four will have frontage on the, the extension of Nordic Meadows Drive. And the lots one and two will have frontage on the extended Nordic Meadows Drive. And lot two technically has double frontage as a, as a corner lot, so to speak. So Carroll Street right now does not extend down to the south border of lot two. That extension is actually being worked on by the property owner immediately to the east. So this, this property right here is actually already in the planning division as a subdivision, a one lot subdivision. And they're required to extend Carroll Street down to about this point where the intersection would make that that four-way intersection and then extend forward or towards the east. So this one lot subdivision will extend Carroll Street to the south and east. And then this Asgard subdivision will connect Nordic Meadows Drive over to Carroll Street and create that intersection. It is. And so that's the one lot where, where we have those flexible standards where, for example, the entire lot area, there's, there's enough acreage at 19 acres to allow for six lots. But the dedication and the improvement of Nordic Meadows Drive just slightly brings the area down to where they would not be able to get six slots. So the, the newly passed language allows for that flexible standard. Yep, they did provide a, a contract with Nordic Valley Water to, to service all six lots. Yep, so if you look in the staff report, they did soil testing on the parent parcel. So we know the parent parcel is feasible. As a condition of approval, they'll have to do soil testing on all six lots and provide feasibility for all six of them before we can go forward for a final. So this particular subdivision is just for preliminary approval tonight. Okay, any questions? I'd happy answering for you.
Okay, thanks Scott. Looks good. Okay, how about 2.3, the point conversation? Steve, are you gonna be? Tell us about that?
Yeah, yeah, I'll be presenting this item in the, in the regular meeting. Just to kind of remind the planning commission, over the past few months, you've, you've seen this property a few times. There was a slight rezone to change the boundary just a little bit to give this PRUD a little bit more flexibility in the, in the room, in the area that it had to put the buildings. But previously, this was a, an approved PRUD for these, this specific phase would have been like three buildings with 16 condominium units each. And so this is really kind of the, the, one of the final steps in, in the process is plating these units. And so that's, that's what's being considered tonight as a preliminary plan. And then at another, if preliminary approval is granted by the planning commission, the owner will have to come back for a final approval from the planning commission as well. But there is, at this point, it's, it's a, it's a pretty cut and dry type subdivision. We have sent out a notice as we do for preliminary approval. So there, there may be some individuals here tonight to speak from the public on that item. But we've got water and sewer capacity letters and will serve letters for this. Some things we'll be looking for at like a final are maybe like a landscaping plan and some kind of final improved, final improvement plans that would be approved by the county engineer. But those will come to you at like a final approval. I'll answer any questions if you have any.
Sounds fine. I'll be recusing myself, by the way, just so you know.
In the last, I think it was, I want to say it was June, it could have been May, I think it was June. There was an amended conditional use permit that was approved by the planning commission where you looked at things like parking and the architecture, materials and color of the building and all that stuff.
Probably need to scoot all the chairs down to line up with the microphones. For some reason, there was a missing chair, we noticed. So I don't know if you want to realign the.
Is there only, there's only six monitors, but seven mics, huh?
Uh oh, I'd like to nominate Justin Torman for. Gavel. Yeah, that's the trick, it's either stuck to the table. Okay, any other questions on that one? Snide remarks, anything? I hope so. It's getting kind of old, I'm sure. All right, so 2.4, our first short-term rental permit. This one from Felix and the next one from Tammy.
Yes. Yeah, so a, a conditional use permit in the FR3 zone. So the FR3 zone is, is mainly in place for these recreation areas where, where you would have, you know, condo tells and recreation resorts and major, basically major recreation areas that are close to the mountains and things. And so, yeah, this, this zone was created for that purpose. And what this applicant is looking to do is, is just through the conditional use permit, get approval for short-term rentals on this, this, this home of hers. Yeah, that's, that's pretty much the, the request before you. That's right, yep. Yeah, yep. Yeah, and I mean, with a lot of these, these short-term rentals, there's, there's HOAs that do have some amount of enforcement and some teeth to, to enforce. But there is also a lot of responsibility that falls on the owner, you know, the person renting that.
Your thing. Reiterating people that are just. Use permit, Ken.
That's true, yep, that's a good point. Any questions you, you have on that one? Okay. All right, thank you.
Felix. And Tammy, we'll do our next short-term rental on Creekside Way.
I think we're all fairly familiar with this neighborhood. I will say that with some urging from planning, the developer has installed the no parking signs. So those will be shown in the presentation. This is again, a second residence for the owner, they're looking to utilize it as a short-term rental. They do have a single parking spot in their one-car garage that would be designated for use of whoever was staying there for that night. They've indicated if there are any additional vehicles, that guest parking is on site for that. Too many questions for me, again, FR3 zone, yeah.
Are we pressing on short-term?
Yeah, so we had a work session with the county commission this last week. And they, if you'll recall, a couple of months back, they asked us to, to push pause on the process and let, let the community just take a minute. I can get you a copy, it's the same that we had proposed with the planning commission for review. Yeah, so. Now, the, the commission is still considering the, the recommendations from the planning commissions. This last work session we had, they'd like to explore a few. It is. Over west, west Weaver? Oh, that zone.
What about that?
Yeah, those are. Yeah, individual rezoning requests to rezone to that zone would be individually reviewed, but it isn't allowed to use in those zones as well, it's a conditional use in those zones. Sure.
Okay, well, we're ahead of time, so any comments from commissioners are welcome. Or planning staff? Reminiscing?
Just to let everybody know, Rick Grover's out of the office today. So he's asked that I fill in for him. I don't have my name tagged, but I'm Steve Burton.
Say, Rick, your hair looks great today, what happened? Yeah, it's so real. All right, well, we'll just wait till five so that the public can chime in appropriately. Otherwise, Cortland gets all upset. What's off the college now? Three weeks? Yeah, she went back, she's got her last year. She's just went back. Yeah, although this is her second year. Actress. Yeah. They call me for the. You don't love that one.
I do.
My Jeep stopped working. Now you call me. I will be, she's actually up this weekend at the Perry Egyptian here. She's Neil's stepsister. How about your relatives? Turkey running around every time I turn around. Let's go to the E and L's and find all the turkeys that want up there. Your turkeys are kind of skinny though. Turkey named Spive. She'll run back. Here whisper. There was like a, I don't know, six by six or something, beautiful, run around patio springs one year. Everyone's just like terrified for the thing. All the lights are like. Okay, everybody ready? All right, I'd like to welcome everybody to the Ogden Valley Planning Commission for July 27th, 2021. Let's go ahead and do the pledge of allegiance. All right, I'd like to go ahead and welcome Commissioners Francis Torman, myself, Louis Lackey, Howell, Schuman and Burton. I think that's all seven of us, how about that? Okay. Let's see, first we'll go ahead and take a look and approve the minutes for May 4th and May 25th, 2021. Has everybody had a chance to look over the minutes? And are there any questions or changes? Okay, I'll entertain a motion on the minutes to approve them. Do I have a first? I need a motion. No? Do I have a motion to approve them? Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of the minutes approved, say aye. Any opposed? Okay.
Now that, that's an interesting question. I don't know actually if there is a rule about that, I think if you had a.
If you reviewed them, but you weren't there, you're probably okay.
You might be okay. I don't think it matters so much tonight if everybody who was there votes in favor of it. But that may be something that we could look into for the future. If it ever came down to a situation where maybe there were only four of you here and only two of you had been at that meeting.
We have a quorum, so. Okay. So. Motion passes. Okay, well, let's go ahead and start with our first item. So 2.1, consideration and action on the design review approval of Snow Basin Canyon Rim and Maples Parking Lot expansions. That will be presented by Scott Perkins.
Thank you Chair.
Thanks Scott.
Okay, so as indicated, this is file number DR 2021 08 for designer, or design review approval of the Snow Basin Canyon Rim and Maples Parking Lot expansion to add a total of 346 stalls, 91 of which is in Canyon Rim and 255, 255 in Maples. I'm gonna share my screen real quick to show you the the project itself. A little bit of delay here, apologize. A little bit of delay here, apologize. Okay. So, uh, looking at Canyon Rim, this is where um, we'll be adding 91 stalls. To the existing parking lot. So effectively we're adding one uh, tier, uh, one um, lane and stalls on either side. Um, so that's a Canyon Rim side and then the Maples uh, towards the south and. Um, in this parking lot, we'll be adding uh, two tiers of stalls for a total of uh, 255. Um, the total area in, in these two lots um, totals 2.4 acres of added stalls. And in the land use code, um, whenever we exceed an area of an acre or more that is disturbed, um, design reviews come to the planning commission for approval. Um, so given the, the size and scale, um, this application is, is before you. Um, this is in the DR one zone, um, as part of the Snow Basin master planned area. And is technically area A of the overall development agreement. So I'm gonna hop over to that area and show you where that is in the master plan for the resort. Okay, so area A over in this red circled area. Um, as you'll see, this area was intended to have surface parking and structured parking as part of the master plan. And they're existing lots, um, these lots are seasonal in nature. Um, and are, when they're used during the winter season are loaded with staff members present to help guide people into their stalls and they also help to lead them out at the end of the day to alleviate traffic congestion. Uh, but they're also temporary in nature as the area A in the master plan is also slated for future vertical development. Um, the proposal proposes to pave these parking lots although they are temporary in nature, but also to have them very consistent with the existing parking lots. Um, our code does allow for the planning commission to review the uh, master plan for the resort. And if they believe that the, the proposal is consistent with the master plan, then they can adopt that proposal by the developer in place of some of the standards in the design review chapter. Uh, but in this, in the uh, staff report, we do go through the design review criteria, um, which are traffic safety and traffic congestion. Outdoor advertising, landscaping, building inside layout, utility easements, and any prior development concept plan approvals. Um, what you'll notice is there's no new roads being proposed, uh, there's no new lighting, um, and the snow storage will be handled on the, the parking lot itself. And there's no outdoor advertising, the landscaping is minimal, they just proposed to reseed the areas that are disturbed those, which is similar to the other parking lots in the area. And there's no buildings that are proposed as part of this project. And they're, they're working with the engineering department to ensure that their improvement plans um, are, are to uh, the county standards, but also that they follow the geotechnical recommendations in the geotechnical report. Um, staff does believe that this is consistent with the master plan as this area was always intended to have parking whether permanent or structured parking or temporary as surface parking. And um, our recommendation is to go ahead and approve this as proposed based on the recommendation and the findings of the staff report. You guys have any questions on this project?
That first picture you showed us with all the cars in it, and you think that's enough parking in that area there? They were pretty crowded, that one. You showed us with all the, it was almost packed then.
We do have a representative here from the resort and they may be able to answer that question better than I, but I think the intent here is to increase parking because.
I understand how many more stalls, but uh, I don't know, gets pretty crowded up there.
It does.
Does the uh, the existing pond accept the additional runoff or the water from the parking lot?
So with the added impervious surface, they are going to have to expand the, the wastewater, not wastewater, uh, stormwater runoff. And they are um, verifying that the calculations for that additional runoff will be accommodated in their, their plan. So the engineering department is reviewing that.
So you, you're proposing that um, your proposed landscaping plan will be submitted for review.
So they're.
That's to the staff, right?
Their landscaping plan uh, is, is minimal. It is based on what is already there. So the existing parking structures have natural vegetation between each tier of parking. Um, and given the snow loads, doesn't make sense to put a lot of landscaping in those areas, but they do propose to reseed with wildflowers and native mixes uh, to restabilize the cut and fill slopes. There's no irrigation that's proposed as part of the.
So this is the only condition you want to impose on them. They have to present a landscaping plan. So it sounds like there's not much to be done, but you want them to bond for it or pay cash.
Well, so that, that's a technically a requirement of the design review is that anything that is required for landscaping that they bond for it. But because it is so minimal, the county engineer may waive that requirement. I think that to reseed the whole area, it's probably a thousand bucks or less. And the county engineer can approve that administratively if it's under 25,000. And if it exceeds 25,000, any bonding has to be approved through the county commission. So if there, if you guys are okay with the proposed landscaping to reseed with net, with native vegetation, then we wouldn't have them submit additional landscaping plans.
So, so that's what you're saying for submitted for review is that we would review it?
No, so staff would review it. Um, what the code allows for is because this is in the DR one zone and this is a master planned area that if what is proposed by the developer is satisfactory to the planning commission, then the planning commission can approve that and not have the specific standards of the landscape requirements in the design review code satisfied. Uh, there's very specific requirements under design review for landscaping that, uh, you know, commercial structures, new commercial development has to be beholden to. Uh, but because this is a master planned area, if we believe that what is proposed is consistent with the master plan, then you can adopt what the proposal is from the developer. That makes sense?
So you're suggesting it's not necessary to have this condition in here for landscaping?
It could be that way. If you're okay with what they're, they're proposing, then they don't need to submit any additional information.
Thank you. So that could be part of our motion. So, okay, thanks Scott. Um, I understand the applicants here, do they have anything to add or would they like to speak to it?
Honorable Chair, members of the commission, my name's George Benford. I'm a senior advisor for Talisman Civil Consultants with the engineers that provide services for Snow Basin Resort. Um, and I've, um, read the staff report and we're in agreement and uh, we appreciate your approval. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Is there any concerns of the grades? There's a significant grade drop there. I guess it's from north to south.
On the Maples parking lot?
Sorry, on the, the. Yeah, on the Maples lot, there's a significant grade change there. Is there gonna be any landscape boulders or anything there to help stabilize that, or do you think that's?
We've actually um, designed that consistent with the geotechnical engineers' recommendation on side slopes for stabilization. Uh, for erosion protection, we are going to be putting in a uh, wildflower seed on that uh, for erosion control until some natural vegetation grows in there. We're comfortable with the uh, slope. And that particular slope is being used for uh, moving snow around from the parking lot and they store snow, so that we've watched that to make sure that the equipment will be safe on those side slopes.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Scott, anything further?
I don't have anything, anything further. If you guys have any other questions, I'd be happy answering for you.
Okay, seeing none. Um, I would entertain opening it up to the public. Is there anybody here uh, or online who's here to speak to this uh, from the public? If so, you know, raise your hand or emoji or something. Who's moderating, by the way?
Marta is.
Marta, anybody waving at you on there? Okay, so nothing from the public. Um, I'll open it back up to Commissioners, any other comments regarding this? Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move, make a motion.
Okay.
I move that we approve the administrative design review uh, as requested by the petitioner for DR 2021-08. Subject to all review, agency requirements, and that the staff's recommendation for the landscaping condition be removed. That our approval does not require that condition.
Second. Okay, do I have a second? Okay, second. Additional uh, comments? Okay, hearing none, I'll entertain, let's see, I'll go ahead and take a vote on that motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you. All right, uh, we'll go ahead and hear 2.2 UVA 070821, consideration action preliminary approval for Asgard Heights subdivision, six slots on Nordic Valley Road. Uh, Scott, you're also up on this one.
Thank you Chair. Okay, as indicated, this is a, a proposed six lot subdivision in the Nordic Valley area at approximately 3416 Nordic Valley Road. Um, the, the proposed area is just short of 19 acres at 18.96. And is primarily um, zoned um, in the F V three zone with a little bit of it in the A V three zone. Um, both of which allow for single family residential and, and they both require a three acre minimum lot size and 150 feet of width. And the applicant has proposed uh, the configuration that you see on your screen uh, for preliminary approval. Um, where the two southernmost lots, lots four and five gain access from Nordic Valley Road. Lots three and four in the middle will gain access from an extension of Nordic Meadows Drive. And lots one and two will also have access from the extension of Nordic Meadows Drive. Um, until such a time that Carroll Street is extended further south, then lot two will have access from both Carroll Street and Nordic Meadows Drive as a corner lot. Um, each of the lots meet the zoning minimum with exception to lot number one, which is slightly substandard, which was uh, negotiated through the planning division with the applicant as being allowed to be substandard so long as they extended the Nordic Meadows Drive um, east to meet up with the future extension of Carroll Street, which was a desired connectivity point. Um, our land use code does allow for that to become substandard, up to 50% of the area can be reduced and 50% of the width can be reduced if the developer is willing to, to make those connections happen. And so this uh, configuration was at the request of the planning division staff, um, I believe provides the, the planned connectivity for the area. Um, looking through the analysis on this, uh, the proposal does meet the general plan requirements um, by keeping the existing density and single family uh, development in the area. Um, culinary water is being provided by uh, Nordic mountain water. They do have an agreement with that provider uh, to provide culinary water to each of the six lots. And that agreement does have a condition that each lot is allowed to have up to, but not to exceed 5,000 square feet of landscaped area. And they can use the culinary water for that landscaped area, but no more. And so the applicant is proposing to use the secondary water exemption, which is newer language in our code that allows for lots that have pre-existing vegetation to maintain that vegetation undisturbed, un-irrigated um, until such a time that uh, co, the secondary water is provided in the area. So the applicant will, will be required to enter into a covenant on each of those lots that state that they're limited to 5,000 square feet of landscape area as a maximum. So that's water as far as uh, culinary and secondary. Uh, sanitary sewage, each of these lots will be uh, served by an onsite wastewater system. And we do have a letter of feasibility from the health department for the parent parcel, but we do need to have additional uh, feasibility letters for each of the six lots before we move forward for final. Uh, as you'll see on your screens there, this, uh, this property does have quite a bit of floodplain that encumbers uh, the south and east portions of it. And you'll see that delineated in the light blue lines. That, that area in our code, whenever you're building in a floodplain, you're required to do one of two things. You're either required to label it as non-developable or you can submit estimated base flood elevations for that area for our engineering department to review. And if our engineering department agrees with those base flood elevations, then we can list those on the plat. And any future buildings that occur on those lots will have to show that they're above that base flood elevation. Uh, so the, the applicant is going to do that. They've already submitted those uh, elevations to us for our review. Uh, and our engineers are, are looking at that, but the applicant is also going through a FEMA process to modify that flood zone based on those estimated base flood elevations to allow the zone to be shrunk down to the dark blue delineation on the map there. So before we have final approval, the plat will have to show the base flood elevations as approved by the engineers. And that will satisfy the floodplain requirements for this area. This, this uh, floodplain is, is caused by an intermittent stream that runs through um, the, the parcels here. And uh, the final plat will have to show a 50 foot setback from high watermark, which is a requirement of all intermittent streams and new subdivisions. Uh, so we'll see that on the final plat when that's submitted for review. Other than that, uh, staff does recommend approval of this subdivision based on uh, the preliminary layout. Um, there are a few conditions that will need to be satisfied, satisfied before final approval. Do you guys have any questions for me at this time?
Yeah, just preliminary is just to get the ball started and they can, they have to prove their case to the planning staff and engineers and everybody else before they come back.
Okay, that sounds good. Um, is uh, the applicant here? Would they like to speak to this at all? Come on up.
Then maybe he's here with us. He's the applicant here.
Okay, thanks. Welcome.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Appreciate your time and your dedication. I know this is not a high-paid job that you perform. Uh, and thank you Scott and planning staff. They've been great to work with as we tried to meet all the uh, rules and regulations in this process. I think as Scott had indicated, probably one of the earlier challenges was this flood zone designation, which FEMA had designated as A flood zone. Talking to the FEMA folks, asked how they derived of that and they said, well, tongue in cheek, we take our Crayolas out and on places like this, we just mark something in. It's an intermittent gully that flows a bit. Uh, I've been working with FEMA for a uh, letter of map amendment, so we just concluded engineering that established the base flood elevation for a hundred year flood in that area. And uh, we've been working with FEMA to submit that as well. And it comes out looking like Scott has it shown here on the map. So uh, in A zones, there, there really, there is no engineering done by FEMA on an A zone. It's just a rough estimation. Uh, and the peculiar thing that the engineer suggested, he said, your A zone flood area at the top is much, much wider than the FEMA flood zone at the bottom. He said, go figure how that should work. So they recognized that this just needs to be modified. It hadn't been engineered. Now we've done that. So I think we're meeting lot size, we're meeting setback requirements. Uh, we finished the soil tests, the septic's uh, information's coming in. We had the geotech's been finished, that's been submitted now. Um, so we're in progress, I think, to meet all and comply with all the regulations of the county. Uh, to make this a great place for folks who like to live in your beautiful part of the country. So appreciate your support and approval and any questions I'd be glad to address. So appreciate your support and approval and any questions I'd be glad to address.
Question? Um, I'm thinking. Estimating, it seems like it was this area about seven or eight years. Are you familiar? How long have you been familiar with this property?
This particular property only about a year and a half, about a year and a half, this particular property.
It seems like there was flooding in this area about seven, I'm thinking around six or seven years ago. Just was wondering if you're aware of that at all?
Uh, I've talked to the county flood control folks and the county engineer on this. They have a three foot culvert that goes through the road. This has an area of about less than one square mile that it, that it collects water on. And the county said that contained it just fine. Uh, so didn't wash over the road, didn't wash out the culvert. Uh, even though we plotted the flood zone, it's going to be a little bigger than that. It's, it's measured for 71 cubic feet per second. That flowed through there. But once again, this all will be approved by FEMA, not by us, but it has been engineered. They have done the evaluations, they've done all the calculations on it and. And so that's what has been submitted to the county and county's engineers be able to review that as well.
And they're looking at sheet flooding there too. Sheet flooding, are they looking at sheet flooding?
Well, 100 year, 100 year flood zone is what the regulations require. And we've actually looked at the 500 year flood zone. You see this little piece in the kind of orange on the. That's the 500 year flood zone, which you can see is not much larger than the 100 year flood zone.
County's definitely looking, the county engineers are definitely looking at sheet and everything else that could end up there. They'll have to get past that hoop.
But this, like this year, there was water in that gully for three days. Of course, it's a dry year.
Yeah.
You would like to see it in there longer, but, uh. But I think the, uh, you know, the engineers determine that, not I. Further questions? Thank you very much.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Maybe. Okay, uh, I'll go. Anything else from you, Scott?
No, I just wanted to add that, uh, the 500 year was in this as well. It's kind of hard to see. It's in orange. I don't know if you guys were able to pick that out with the size of the. Image here, but that does have the calculations for the 500 year flood event as well. So our engineering department just received the calculations and they'll be the ones that will need to review it just for the base flood elevations if we agree with the analysis. And those base flood elevations will be depicted on the final plat, which will be reviewed by us as well before approval. And when they pull building permits on each of these six lots, we'll verify that their finished floor elevation for their lowest floor is above the base flood elevation. So hopefully nobody gets flooded out based on our math.
And a quick question on that. So maybe on the creek for this intermittent stream, but there again, the county's going to look at sheet flooding from other sources over this property. That's my concern.
Yeah.
Not basic, not just from that creek.
Yeah, the, the analysis, I, I looked through it briefly and I'm not an engineer, keep in mind, but it does have a very detailed methodology of how they calculated all the water and they were very. Conservative on some of their assessments. But we'll let the engineers be the ones to verify that. Do you have questions for me?
All right, thanks, Scott. Um, okay, is there anybody from the audience that would like to speak to this? I'll be glad to open up to the public if so, online as well. Okay. Back to you, Scott. Anything additional?
Uh, no, just, uh, we recommend approval. We're waiting for the final plat to come in that will follow this general layout if it receives preliminary approval and we'll bring it back to you for final.
Okay, so just preliminary. To the commissioners, any further questions for staff? Okay, I'll go ahead and entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion. I move to approve petition number UVA 070821 for preliminary approval. Of Asgard Heights subdivision consisting of six lots, 18.96 acres located at 3460 Nordic Valley Road, Liberty, Utah. Zone FB3 Forest Valley and AV3 Agricultural Valley. This preliminary approval is subject to all recommendations listed in the staff report and to all state and county agencies requirements. This preliminary approval is based on the findings listed in the staff report. Dan Maybe is the applicant.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a second? Second. Okay, any comments? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, thank you, Scott.
Thanks, Commissioners.
Okay, uh, item 2.3 UVP 070821 on the point. Uh, I'll have to recuse myself. Steve will be presenting and I'm going to go ahead and turn everything over to the vice chair, Francis.
Hi, Commissioners. So, uh, as was stated, this is a request for preliminary approval of a subdivision plat called the Point subdivision. Um, this is located at 3850 North Wolf Creek Drive. Um, it consists of, uh, 48 condominium units. So there'll be three buildings with 16 units each. Um, just a little bit of background. Um, you might remember this, uh, over the last few months, there was a rezone. Um, at the north side of this, so there could be a little bit more room to fit these three buildings. Following the rezone, there was a conditional use permit amendment. To amend the site plan to, to expand that area. But there is no new density. There was no density with the rezone. There's no new density with the, uh, with the PRUD amendment. And so this is really just plating the number of units that were, uh, previously approved back in 98. Uh, as far as water and sewer goes, uh, we've received a will serve letter, uh, from the, um. Wolf Creek Water and Sewer Improvement District, and they've agreed to provide, uh, water, so culinary water, secondary water and sanitary sewer services to these lots. Uh, to these units. The few things, other things to note, uh, the property is in a geologic hazards area and the applicant has provided a, a hazard study with that. Uh, we haven't, as, as we've reviewed that at staff, we haven't, um, there hasn't been anything that stuck out as a major concern or anything that has a really a, a high risk. So what we would do is when building permits are issued, we just make it a, a condition that they develop these, uh, buildings as recommended by the, by the geologist. We have sent out a public notice as we do with preliminary subdivision applications. Um, so that was sent out last week. We've spoken with our engineers who, the county engineer who's comfortable with this project receiving a preliminary approval. Uh, before it comes back to you for final, we'll look in more detail at, at the improvement plans that will be submitted. As far as the staff recommendation goes, um, as you'll see in your staff report, staff is recommending that, uh, you as the planning commission grant a preliminary approval to this subdivision. And it's based on the findings that are in the staff report, which are, one, the proposed subdivision, I'm, I'm sorry, this. Not the correct wording in, in the, uh, in the findings I'm noticing. This is not an amendment, so I should say the proposed subdivision conforms to the Ogden Valley general plan. And the proposed subdivision complies with all previous approvals and the applicable county ordinances. I'll answer any questions if you have any. Uh, there, there also is a representative of the owner here as well. Um, so I, I, I mentioned that there, there weren't really any concerns. Um, we could. Pull up the report on Frontier if you'd like and it, uh, I, I'm sure, uh, Mr. Householder might be able to answer that question also if you'd like.
Uh, Eric Householder of the Householder Group. We did pull a report together and truly I do not recall exactly what those findings were. Obviously, we're. We laid out our subdivision, you know, based on those findings. You, you know, historically, there's been some water that's been through there, um, but it has been, there's some drains that have been put in the last few years that have been captured and that, but. We're not seeing a big issue. No.
Really liked a second, like, so we, I don't know if we got an answer to your question. What was the concern, Scott? Like that you guys reviewed and you said you didn't feel it was concerning that there was a geological issue and don't feel like we got a real answer.
Sure. So, so the question was, uh, what geological concerns there are? And we don't have any on, on the, on the staff end. Um, so there is, the, a portion of this property is located. In what we call a geologic hazards area, potential geologic hazards area. So when that happens, and, and let me back up a little bit as well. Uh, we received data from UGS, the Utah Geological Survey that has basically said that, you know. These specific areas, uh, there's a map. It says these specific areas may have potential geologic hazards. And so we have an ordinance that requires anytime development happens in these areas that we have mapped. Um, that the developer provide us a study from a geologist that gives recommendations. It also gives. It also points out what the risks are. So it'll say there's a high, potentially there's a high risk of landslide or there's a moderate risk of sheet flow or there's a low risk. As we reviewed the report, there wasn't anything that stood out as, um, hazardous or a, a, any kind of a high or even a moderate risk. And so, um, we, I, in my presentation, I just pointed out, yes, this is in a potential geologic hazards area. But we have received a report from a geologist. And what we will do is we'll require that any, any conditions or any recommendations that the geologist makes in that report. Will require that the building be, be built to that standard.
Thank you, Steve. That's good explanation.
Uh, Steve, uh, the bottom line is, at this point right now, this is a preliminary approval. The county doesn't have any problems with this particular project.
That's correct. Yeah, the county review agencies don't, do not have any, um, concerns with this preliminary proposal.
And like I say, it's the preliminary approval, so there's still a lot of stuff you have to do.
Correct. It'll come back before you for some kind of a final approval.
Any further questions from the commission? Is there anyone in the audience or online that would like to speak to this? Right. There is one. Jan Fulmer?
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, Jan.
Okay.
Please proceed.
Okay, um. I guess this is both a question and a concern. Very much of a concern. Uh, at last week's weekly Weber County Commission meeting, there was a developer who wanted to put in 13 units. Uh, and have the zoning change to FR3 and have those units, 13 units be short-term rental. The commissioners voted to allow the zoning change, but not for short-term rentals. And one of the reasons for that was there is absolutely no inventory. That is in the Weber County databases that can spit out how many short-term rental dwelling units there are in Ogden Valley. And in addition to that, and more importantly, because of issues that have kept coming up in the valley. The Weber County has absolutely no way to enforce short-term rentals, especially in the unincorporated areas. So out of fairness to the developer that was on the other side of the valley. I just think it is best not to proceed with anything until Weber County is ready to address short-term rentals. I've already gotten an Excel spreadsheet from a grammar request I submitted to the assessor's office. They can't even spit out dwelling units based on zone. We, a team of us have put together a list of how many dwelling units in Ogden Valley we have found and we verified it that allows short-term rentals. And right now we're up to 1,091. The thing that is most interesting is the county only has recorded 32 permits for short-term rentals. Now, something's way out of whack here. So. My recommendation, and I guess my request is please, we can't go on building these until there's some way to control it. And out of fairness to the county, to make sure they are collecting the revenue that they are due from these rentals. That's it.
Thank you. Would the staff like to speak to that?
Um, yeah, so to address that, um, there was a, a rezoning that was considered by the county commission. It was last week. Um, the difference between that and this is, this is not a rezoning application. This is not a legislative item. It's already zoned for short-term rentals. And so it's a right that the applicant has currently. Um, what, what Mrs. Fulmer described, short-term rentals was not a right for those individuals. But since this is zone FR3, the, the owner does have the right to actually have short-term rentals on the property. Um, one thing I'll mention is for a subdivision like this, um, there's a few ways to get. Short-term rentals approved. Um, one of them is if the developer place, places a note on the subdivision plat that states that it's been approved for the. For the entire development. Otherwise, each individual lot owner would need to come in after, kind of like we've, we've, uh, we've seen in, in. Well, we've got a few of them on the agenda tonight. But, uh, yeah, there's, there's a few ways to have short-term rentals approved here.
So as it stands right now, uh, short-term rentals are allowed in this zone.
That's correct. So, um, I don't, uh, the, the requirement is that they have, um, the, that they have a, a note on the final subdivision plat. We haven't seen what that looks like yet. I imagine, um, just given the location and, and the type of units these are. That the developer will choose to put that as a platinum.
Well, this particular item right, we have up before us right now, it doesn't indicate any short-term rentals and it. And it doesn't indicate any zone changing, so we can move forward on it.
Correct. Are these for sell? Like, are these condominiumized?
Yeah, yep, there's, so there's, uh, 16 units in each building. So there'd be, I believe it's eight on the first floor and eight on the second floor, so two floors.
So they're all for sell?
Yeah.
Okay.
How many bedrooms will they have, Eric? Do you know off the top of your head?
Um, I do believe it's like two to three. There are some single. You know, I would go back to the comment that was made. This came through as an amended conditional use. And at that time, we did request the nine rentals. It's consistent with what is around it in the master planned resort. You know, I just want to also comment on the geology. Um, we was talking about this map and essentially everything up in this area starts out on this red blob. So we come in, we bring in professionals, geologists, the geotech, you know, and we build based on their recommendations and their findings, so. But it's not abnormal for like this area to fall into that red. It's pretty much everything up there.
Thank you. Any other, uh, comments or questions from the commission?
I have the impression this is kind of the final.
Preliminary.
No, but it's, uh, of this project, this is kind of the final phase. Is that right, Steve?
No, there's, uh, there's an additional phase, um, that will be done after this. So I think it's just one more building.
One more, but this was all approved back in 1998.
Yeah, the site plan and the number of units, um, were allocated, uh, and approved back in 98.
Thank you.
Anything else? Seeing none, uh, we will entertain a motion.
Make a motion on this one. I move to approve petition number UVA 070821 for preliminary approval of Asgard Heights subdivision consisting of six lots, 18.96 acres located at 3460 Nordic Valley Road, Liberty, Utah. I moved to approve petition, I moved to approve the preliminary approval of petition number UVP070821, point subdivision located at approximately 3,850 North Wolf Creek Drive, Eden, Utah. Approximately three acres, FR3 zone, forest residential zone. This preliminary approval is subject to all conditions and recommendations listed in the staff report and all state and county agencies requirements. This motion is based on the findings listed in this staff report. Representative is Eric Householder, and this is a preliminary approval.
We have a second.
Oh, second.
You have a motion and a second. Is there any other additional comment?
I, I just want to say one thing. This is, this is where we want the short-term rentals. And there's a lot of debate back and forth about are they good or they're bad, well, they're going to happen. And, and my point of view is, and it differs from the staff sometimes, but my point of view is, is let's cluster that. So when we do need resources like law enforcement, all the problems are in a very small area. So I, I think this is the, the right, the right place for this.
Okay. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Any dissenting vote? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Is someone care, fetching John?
We have to collect, John.
Remember, he can't hear us.
I don't know what you did wrong, John, but, uh-oh.
All right. Thank you, Sharon. Okay, we're going to go ahead and hear 2.4 CUP 2021-10, consideration action on a conditional use permit for short-term rental at 4782 East, 3925 North, Eden, Utah. Felix, you'll be presenting.
Yes, that's right. Thank you, Chair. Good evening to everybody and also the attendees on, on Zoom meeting online. Appreciate your time tonight. So what we have before you is a, an application, a conditional use permit to operate a short-term rental in this single-family dwelling. This single-family dwelling is built back in 2013. It's a Rambler style, a five-bedroom house, a two-car garage. Just the nature of the home design in the front yard and the setbacks, the driveway is not very big. And so it's not really feasible to have parking on the driveway. The parking for the short-term rental would be strictly within the two-car garage. They would, so this use would be limited to two cars within the garage. When this development, it's called Fairway Oaks, was, was platted, and the, there was also some overflow parking areas for, for visitors, some additional parking. But it, staff's, staff's recommendation that, that, that the, the use be limited to just the two parking spaces within the, the garage. Due to, there's a couple of uses that are involved with that, those extra visitor parking areas. I mean, during the summer, they're perfectly usable and fine during the winter. There, they were intended to have multipurpose use where you could maybe plow, bring some snow over to there and just kind of push it off the edge. And so we didn't want that to become a nuisance, you know, having extra cars parked there, especially during the winter. And so in the forest, for, the FR3 Forest Residential, the, the main purpose of that zone is primarily for the recreational resorts, recreation areas, recreational facilities in these mountainous areas. That's, that's the whole purpose of this zone. The FR3 lists nightly rentals as a conditional use, which is why you have this conditional use permit application for you this evening. The owner is looking to utilize that short-term rental occasionally while she's out of town and, and do so legally, which is why she's, she's applied for it. Let's see here. Part of staff's analysis is looking at safety, parking, also environmental, maybe degradation that might occur. We also look at the general plan to see if it does support that, and which it does. So after doing a, a review and analysis, we put together a report and with our recommendation. So staff recommends approval of this conditionally used permit application with the, the three findings that are listed there. There's, there's a, that first requirement comes from the fire district. Where it's talking about the safety for, in case there's a fire. And there's also, the second one is, relates to a business license that's needed for, to operate a short-term rental. And number three, it, it's related to the, the parking limitations, the, the two, two vehicles, two spaces in parking will be limited to just the within the garage. Here's a, an area map showing the location of this, right there in Wolf Creek. And there's also the, the narrative that was included. Let me go down. This is the recorder's plat map. And here's a, another map that, actually, this map is probably a little easier to see. You can see those overflow parking areas for, for visitor parking. So that, that really concludes my presentation, and, and I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any. I, I don't see the applicant with us more on Zoom. But yeah, I'll answer questions if I can.
Felix, I understand the HOA does allow STRs there, but I know their biggest problem is parking. So again, you're saying that this is approval based on parking just inside the garage?
That's correct.
Okay.
You know, it has to be made clear to the applicant too, that this is a conditional use permit can be revoked if it's violated.
Yes, I'll, I'll make that clear. Maybe we could also add that as a condition.
Yeah, I think it's important that we just keep tabs on the parking. That's the biggest thing that gets out of whack, especially in a, in a patio home combination like this.
Gotcha. Yep.
Not, not to beat a dead horse on the parking, but so you put 10 people in this house and you only have two parking spots. Every guest this house has, they're, everybody's going to own a minivan. I mean, how else are you going to get 10 people into a house?
Well, the problem is, they'll, you know, the owner understands this and says, yeah, I agree, but then the renters just show up in the minivan or whatever. Yeah, so you just have to say, well, then you're going to lose your license if you don't stick to this. You're going to have to police it. Because it, it will get out of hand really quick. So.
So Felix, what kind of messaging do you provide to the, the homeowner that says, hey, we're serious about this? And do they, do they know how many chances they get before the permit goes away? How, how do you, how does the county communicate that?
Yeah. As far as the county goes, we, we have a couple of zoning enforcement officers. So if there's any complaints or anything, they usually get a warning. And then we could move, you know, even go even further with revoking that conditional use permit. But yeah, that's, that's typically, and, and now, I mean, if, if approval is given, if they get a conditional use permit, then we're actually able to track the use a lot better. And so we know, okay, this specific property has the ability to do short-term rentals, so it's kind of on our radar at that point.
We can speak to that.
Mentioned just earlier on the other, the item before this, where that person calling in. Look at all the illegal short-term rentals we have up there. I mean, you know, laws don't earn any good at all unless you enforce them. And that, you know, you got to have some way to enforce that, you know, and bring these people to compliance.
As far as the communication that's done between staff and the applicant, once a conditional use permit is granted, we'll prepare both a notice of decision and an actual conditional use permit. The notice of decision will, we will send to them and upload to the project on Frontier. But the conditional use permit, we, we actually have them sign. And so we'll have them sign it. Typically, there's a, a conversation after the meeting saying, you know, here, here are the, here are the conditions. Let us know if you have any questions on this. And then we have, we have them sign it. Other than that, there isn't much, there isn't much conversation. If, if you wanted to, you know, in your recommendation, you could have, you know, something, I don't know if it'd be submitted from the owner that states, yes, I understand that two, only two spots in the garage will be what can be used. As far as the enforcement goes, like Felix said, we do have a few code enforcement officers. It is really a complaint basis. So if we get complaints about parking and we see that it is from this rental, we will approach the, the owner and say, you know, if you don't fix this by X date, it's usually, I know we were working on an ordinance that, that got shut down as far as the short-term rentals, and there's been talk of, of adopting that, which would, I think, be a little bit faster on the enforcement side. But usually, it's a number of weeks, just a few weeks, that they say, hey, you need to have this updated, you need to have this fixed. If we don't see it, we'll actually revoke the permit. So currently, code enforcement's really good about working with, with owners and making sure that it, that those get taken care of. But as Mrs. Fulmer pointed out, there, there has been, there has been issues with short-term rentals in the past. But we, we believe our code enforcement on a project like this could, can ha, could handle it pretty well.
Well, they've just recently added another enforcement officer, but they have the whole county, and they have a host of duties, not just ordinances. There's all kinds of things that they have to do in the whole county. Actually, they should have one that just does short-term rentals. I mean, that would keep one busy all the time, if they had one to do that.
Right. And as, as staff, we, we, we also often work with applicants and since, at, at this point, going through this process, generally, we know them. So we can also reach out to them and say, hey, we got a complaint. If you don't fix it by, you know, tomorrow.
Should we put your name in the app?
I don't know about that.
Felix, do we currently have this motion predicated on two parking spots, or is that something we have to add?
It's in there. It adds as a condition.
Okay, so their conditional approval is based on that?
That's right.
And, you know, once you give that, if they don't stick to that, you can yank it?
That's right.
Does it have to be based on two? So my concern is when you look at this house online, be the stickler to make a point, because we know that's not going to happen in reality.
Problem in this particular case, there's not room for more cars.
Looking online. Question I have.
What are they requesting? Are they requesting?
Yeah. So there's a couple of things that come into play. You've got HOA requirements. And so if it's written into the HOA that they're only allowed three, three vehicles. And in this, like, Chair Lewis is correct in saying, you know, the, the way, the way, the reason there's so limited space in the driveway, the house is pushed really close to the road. That driveway is really short. So, yeah, parking a car there is, is, is really tricky. I mean, you might be able to park a smart car there, a motorcycle or something, but other than that, I mean, just regular, even a regular-sized sedan, I don't think it would fit in that, on that driveway.
We know the dimensions of the driveway.
You know, I didn't measure it, but I did make a site visit and just looking at it, yeah, it wouldn't work.
But they're requesting two as part of their conditional request?
They were fine with that condition, because I sent the report over to the applicant and they, they says, yeah, that, that condition looks just fine, so.
Well, the, the thing is too, they have an HOA there and they usually police themselves. The HOAs.
They just have situations where there's 10 cars in front of a house and it gets blown up. So I, I think it's a good idea to have rules that they agree on.
Is there other STRs in this area? Just wondering how they handle it if there's other ones already in there.
Yeah, I, I don't know.
There's other STRs. I don't know if they're on the radar or not, but there's definitely.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
And I, you know, as much as this is controversial, I do think it's a good example of how to do it responsibly and then yank it if it's not. You know, give them the power back. So Felix?
Yeah.
The owner has access to one guest space?
Yes.
But you've chosen not to allow them to use that guest space for the short-term rental?
That's right.
And that is just, of course, you never know if they're using it or not, right?
Yeah. And to be fair, I mean, we, because we went up and did a site visit and not all of those guest spaces were the same size, as they do vary quite a bit.
I don't think there's 37 guest spaces either. There's not one for each house.
I mean, that's a tight subdivision.
Yes.
It's really tight.
Commissioner Burton, as I, when we reviewed this coming through, I, the original proposal was to use the one guest space. As Felix and I looked at this report, I, I didn't, I didn't know whether or not they had permission to use that. So just wanting to, I guess, mitigate any concern with the HOA, my, it was, it was my recommendation to say, well, let's just have you have two in the garage, since normally for a single-family dwelling, we require two units. But I think it's reasonable. If, if the HOA allows the guest space to be used for short-term rentals, I think it would be appropriate to allow them to use that guest space.
Just seems as a practical matter, they can have an occupancy of 10.
Chair?
And I don't know about garage size. Are these tiny garages or big garages?
Yeah, standard two-car garage.
I just know that in this neighborhood, it's been pretty controversial. So I'm thinking the guest spaces probably were part of the original
That's right.
plan of this development, which was a single-family residences. And so because of, most of the driveways are pretty short, I'm thinking, you know, people who live there full-time would like to have a place for their guests to park or extra car or whatever. So it'd have those taken up by people who have short-term rentals. I think it's fair that they wouldn't be part of the equation, because they were there originally for guests of the owners there, of the full-time residents.
So Chair Lewis, just a quick comment. You know, if there's already other STRs in here, then I'm less hesitant. But if we're basically going into a purely residential neighborhood and, and she's the pioneer, she's the one getting.
Yeah, it's not a, you know, it's not a, it's a PRUD. It's not a standard subdivision. And their CCNRs do allow for that, their rentals. But it's also CCNR, you know, oriented. So, I mean, we don't, we haven't really even heard, has the HOA, you know, do you know if it's part of the CCNRs? I think it is, but I mean, is that, has the staff looked at the CCNRs or asked the HOA to talk about it at all?
You know, I.
Lots of the county and the HOAs don't communicate.
And wasn't that just recently changed that, to allow for short-term rental? I thought they just had a recent vote a few months ago, about four or five months ago.
My understanding is they can do STRs, but, you know, guest parking, I don't know. I would assume that's controversial, but.
Hi there. I'm Jan Woods, and I'm sorry to interrupt, but I am on the HOA board.
Actually, let me interrupt you for a second. We're not open to the public yet, but we will open it. So bear with us for just a second.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, well, it sounds like we do have somebody from there. Before I go to the public, do we have any additional questions or comments?
Just wanted to, Steve, when they have, these projects come before the county, why don't they make more parking? So they have to give up a, a spot or something, but it should be mandatory for, if they have this many. spot or something, but it should be mandatory for, if they have this many units that are squeezed together, they need parking and that should be part of it when they prove, you know, that has to be.
Yeah, these, I don't know the exact date these were platted. I believe.
Over 20 years.
Yeah, I was gonna say sometime in the nineties or something like that where, where I don't think the conversation of short-term rentals was as relevant. And so I, I think today, I think an example of a PRUD where we do consider that would be what we just looked at, the point where there's actually above and beyond the parking that's being requested. So.
Places are right on the street, you know, there's, you can't park them back in front of the garage in most of them.
Right. Right. So in this, in this case, and I think a lot of cases, like the villages at Wolf Creek, when these were platted, short-term rentals weren't as, as as relevant as they are today.
Yeah, things have changed. Yeah, no, go ahead. Okay. Well, let's go ahead and open it up to the public. Sounds like we have some people who want to speak to this. I think that would be informative. If, if you're online or here and would like to speak, go ahead and raise your hand. And when you do speak, try to keep it to three minutes and state your name and address. We'll go ahead and take the Marty, you can go ahead and facilitate if you don't mind.
Jan Fulmer.
Yeah. Hi, Jan Fulmer. I live in Eden. Just a couple of things. Number one, if this is the owner's primary residence and they are going to be running it out when they go away, who is going to be there to take care of issues when they occur? Also, if the owner's going to be running it when they're away, the only way to get any enforcement is if people call in and complain to either Iris or the other new compliance officer that they, they hired. If the owner's away, how are you going to contact that person? I think there needs to be more conditions put on this. I know personally, a lot of people that live there, it is their full-time home. They live there. It's a community. So having people coming in, making noise, taking up parking spots, unless there is somebody there, the owner of that property, who's going to step forward and be not only responsible, but accountable for what happens in a timely manner. I think there should be more conditions put on it and there should be a stiff fine per first occurrence.
Okay, thank you.
Janabelle Woods.
Yes, I'm Jan Woods and I am on the board at the Fairway Oaks HOA. And I appreciate you recognizing that we have a lot of parking problems in the community. We are a very small community. This was originally made to be a residential community, not houses that were rented. That's part of the reason I bought my property here is because I would have neighbors who lived there and not strangers. And Wendy has been a responsive owner. I don't believe that she lives in the house. To my knowledge, she does not live there. She is responsive, but at that property, we have had like up to six cars show up at a time. And we simply do not have space for that. We just don't. And, you know, there is not street parking, really. We are, side streets are narrow. And it's just a problem that we continually have. So I was happy to hear that you were limiting it to their garage space. And I do hope that you keep it that way.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else from the public? Okay, I'll go ahead and close the public portion. I just wanted to say too, that, you know, this, this was a neighborhood created 20-plus years ago. Rentals weren't on the horizon. Now they are. It was a patio neighborhood. Short driveways in some situations in this particular one. So, you know, there's a difference between a standard subdivision and a PRUD subdivision. And PRUDs, you are allowed to do nightly rentals. So we can't say no to that unless the HOA precludes it, I think. Is that right, Courtland? So the HOA can rule against it, but otherwise it's, it's an approved use if it's, you know, as opposed to a normal neighborhood, you can't get approval for it.
Yeah, if the HOA had rules that restricted it, then obviously they wouldn't be allowed to do that. That would be something the HOA could enforce as well.
So it's just, I guess I'm pointing out, it's a little bit different than a normal neighborhood, but I think it's a more reason to listen to the HOA. And, you know, what do they want? And as a group, if they agree not to want them, then they don't, you know, they shouldn't have them. But I think this is a situation where they've said, we will do STRs, but I'd like to see us respect their, you know, their rules, whatever they are.
As, as far as if the county would approve them, if the zoning allows it, usually, and I can't remember on an initial approval process, we might look at that, but if it were already allowed in the zone and if the HOA decided not to allow it, that would become a private issue between the HOA and the owners.
As I understand, we've got three conditions here. If the zone allows it, okay, now you can do it. If the CCNRs don't allow it, even though the zone allows it, you can't do it. Because that restriction is on the land. And the HOA, the same thing. If they've all agreed in this HOA, we're not going to do it, even though the zoning allows it, the HOA would regulate that, I think. Is that right, Courtland?
Yes, the HOA would regulate anything related to the CCNRs or other, well, those would be the restrictions that would be on the property. Would be the declaration or the CCNRs.
Okay, so we have a neighborhood that's zoned for it. We have an HOA that said, okay, and we don't have maybe a saying on the additional parking. We don't know about the CCNRs. Nobody's looked at them, right?
We have not, no.
Chair Lewis, did Jan say she was on the board?
No, the Mrs. Wood was.
Dan Wood.
Yeah, yeah, not Dan Fulmer, Dan Wood. We could ask her to come back on as representative of the board to say, you know, where is the board on this? Would that make sense versus tabling it?
To ask what the CCNRs allow?
Yeah. For parking. Or are they allowed and what do you do about parking?
Yeah, our short-term rentals allowed in first place.
Cool. Okay, I'll go ahead and open it back up for the public meeting. Is Mrs. Wood available by chance to speak to this?
Can you hear me now?
We can. Hello.
Good. Hi, it's Jan. Yes, we are. Our documents do say that we allow short-term rentals, but a few months ago, we took a vote and tried to stop the short-term rentals because of the problems that ensue and we do not have the, the ability to police them. And parking is one of those problems. Our, our parking that we do have is for overflow parking. It's not meant to be parked in all the time. It's for your guests, your visitors. We encourage owners not to park in those spots only for short-term periods because it does get really congested. So as a board member, we would like to limit anyone parking in those spaces.
Okay, thank you. I'll go ahead and close public again. So again, Felix, your request is for two spots? They're not asking for more?
No.
So the initial proposal was to use a guest space as well as garage?
Yes.
Okay, three. And your recommendation is just the two?
That's right.
What you're asking us for? Okay, so we can add to that if we, if we want. Okay. Further comments? If I heard right, the board says we, we don't want our owners parking in those guest spots.
Full-time.
Full-time. It's for the guests of the owners to visit and visitors. Limiting this to garage only for two seems appropriate. Because they, the, the occupants under the short-term rental would be equivalent of the owners.
Well, in this case, they would only ask for the two parking spots and that's in the garage. In, in the provision.
I agree with Commissioner Burton. The two parking seems to be the risk.
When, when you said two to them, they said they were okay with that?
Yeah, that's right. So their narrative, let's see here. Oh, maybe it's not the narrative. It's actually this Gmail. May talk about. Okay, so you can see if you read on that first paragraph. Regarding parking, we need to keep the roads clear from parking during the winter months. Please encourage the parking. Or, yeah, please encourage parking to overflow parking spots.
Yeah, a lot of time that visitor parking becomes snowbank.
Yeah.
That is a critical thing.
Okay. Any other comment? Kind of what we're faced with, I think. Okay, I'll go ahead and entertain a motion.
CUP 2021-10 for a conditional use permit for short-term rentals at 4782 East 3925 North Eden, Utah. FR3 Zone Forest Residential. This approval is subject to all conditions and recommendations listed in the staff report and all state and county agencies. This motion is based on the findings listed in the staff report. Any violations to the conditional use permit could be terminated, could terminated the applicant's, the applicant. Wendy Worth is the applicant.
Okay, do I have a second? Discussion? Duly noted. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Felix. Okay, Tammy, you're going to be up for 2.5 CUP 2021-11. Consideration action on another conditional use permit for short-term rental at 3571 Creekside Way. Number 72.
Good evening, commissioners. I know you've had a few of these brought before you, but we've got some newer commissioners here. To introduce, this is, is a request for a conditional use permit for short-term rental use located at 3571 North Creekside Way in the villages at Wolf Creek Development. This is located in the FR3 Zone. And so as such, short-term rentals are allowed as a conditional use. Just going to pull out a few relevant things here. I do a presentation just to kind of orient you a little bit. This is located between Wolf Lodge Drive and Wolf Creek here. The unit does come with, it is a two-bedroom unit with a potential option for a third bedroom, I believe. There is a one-car garage. The driveway is not sufficient for parking an additional vehicle. So to just kind of reference the applicant's narrative, which I believe is contained in the staff report before you, this applicant has owned short-term rentals previously. So they've got a little bit of experience with this and I'm not sure if they're on the call or in the audience here. They do anticipate single families renting this unit out, generally with a single vehicle. I'm not sure if they market it as such. I couldn't tell you that. But that is their anticipation. They have indicated that there is space in the garage for a vehicle. They have noted guest parking in case there is an additional vehicle that comes with this. These have come before you before and the parking has come up regularly as a concern. One of the approvals for the original development by the fire district, this was one of their requirements, was that no parking signs be posted along the interior streets within this development. These were just sent to me last week, actually, after the staff reports went out. These have been posted, I believe, here at these two so far. I'm not sure if we've got a third one here yet, but they have posted the no parking signs, just to go back to that. So you can take a look there. And that is one of the conditions in the staff report is that parking only occurs within designated areas within the development and no parking along any interior streets. So with everything that's been presented, staff would actually recommend approval of this application subject to the conditions outlined in the staff report and based upon the findings also contained in the staff report. Do you have any questions from your end?
Tammy, how big is the garage that they have?
It's a one-car garage.
One car?
Yes, sir.
That's a classic photo you have on the right there.
Do you like that?
How many people will this accommodate?
The, so it's a two-bedroom unit. I believe when you look at the floor plan, there's a great room that's indicated that could be converted to a third bedroom. The owner has indicated that the rentals would be to single families.
I don't see.
There is additional parking, it says in your report. There is additional parking.
There is guest parking, right. So let me go back up here and I'll show you. There are a few designated guest spots along Wolf Lodge Drive and within Creekside Way here.
I'd see an occupancy load on this on the other. Was it 10? Maximum? Not one on this?
We, I haven't been provided any maximum occupancy. Just a bedroom count.
Tammy, can you? I don't mean to interrupt, go ahead.
So what about parking on Wolf Lodge 2? That's fine. That's great if they have them on the interior, but even on the outside, that road is so narrow and.
Along here?
And then because of the erosion, they have to pretty much park in most of the places on the road too. So as you can see, there's cars there right now. That sign says on Wolf Lodge. Where was that?
Let me go back to the signs here. I had to do a double take to make sure that these were not the same sign.
Isn't that the main one that goes up to the other condos?
So these are posted here, Commissioner, at the entrance to both of these interior roads here. I'm not sure if one has been posted a little bit further south yet or not. Does that, does that answer your question?
So that would tell them not to park out there? If they know what the name of that road is?
Sorry, this is just on the interior streets. So these, if you recall, the concern was, I believe these are 20-foot wide roadways here. And the concern was parking on either side of that road would not allow for emergency vehicles. So the fire district required that signs be posted to not allow for any parking along those roads in there. So those have been posted.
I just thought in the past, we had some discussion too, and people over at Wolf Lodge concerned that they were parking along the main road too. So I didn't know if that's, probably wouldn't be in your. I just thought in the past, we had some discussion too, and people over at Wolf Lodge concerned that they were parking along the main road too. So I didn't know if that's probably wouldn't be in your jurisdiction though. So.
Uh, I know there was, there were concerns, I think with snow storage along Wolf Lodge Drive and it impeding that guest parking. I can't speak to that.
Has the county ever asked the sheriff's department kind of pass through there every once in a while?
Uh, you know, as Mr. Burton has responded earlier, we have two code enforcement officers. And frankly, I think we have a fairly tightly staffed sheriff's office. And so it is a complaint-based system. We are very reliant on the public. Getting in touch with the county and making us aware of anything that is not compliant with the zoning that's in place.
I know both pictures you show, it's got somebody parked up there.
Right, yeah.
Tammy?
Yes.
Can you remind me? What month it was when this came up before and I'm? And, and can you confirm that we denied that one based upon just the, the small area for parking?
There were two applications that came before you. I believe it was back in February. Um, and they were both denied with parking as a concern. They were then brought before the Board of Adjustment. Um, who felt that parking was an issue that could be mitigated and therefore the conditional use should have been allowed. And so. That decision was reversed and they were approved by the Board of Adjustment. The following month.
Yes, I think we've got a, a deal where, I mean, it looks like a disaster to me, but. It was also approved twenty-five years ago, you know, so. That's, that's where this problem is. Today's things that get designed to have, you know, one point seven five parking spots per condo door. And that makes a big difference, but this doesn't. But it's ultimately up to their HOA now. So I'm not sure what else we can do.
And we allow for additional, remember ones we voted. Just have to say that.
Commissioner Schuman, can I just remind you to speak into the mic so that the minutes can be heard? That's okay.
We got overruled last time.
Since it's, it, it's, they, they have the right to do it.
Horse is already out of the barn.
Yeah, they have the right to do the, to do the short-term rental. We just can put conditions on there.
Yeah, but.
With Courtland, it's, you know, very tough to put conditions on there too.
Well, they have to be based on some kind of. Standard that's listed in the ordinance and they have to be based on some kind of fact. That is supported in, in the record by evidence that you have in front of you. You can't just speculate. You can't just, uh.
It looks like, looks like a crowded.
For conditions, yeah. So, but yeah, it is.
For example, we could make conditions that there be one vehicle or. Things like that. Is that correct? Just like we did on the previous?
If there is something that you can base that on, I mean, in the previous one. There was clearly limited parking within that area you were talking about. And you heard from a member of the. HOA board. Um, if you feel that those facts that you had in front of you justified that, then yes, you could put that condition on there. And, and so it really depends on what, what's in front of you, um, as far as the facts that you have to base that on.
So.
Yes.
One-car garage would be a sufficient fact in front of us.
If, if you feel that that is, uh, sufficient based on what you're seeing here. And based on. I guess all the evidence that. Would be something, I mean, if it were challenged. What the courts would look at. It keeps saying this. I feel like I'm, uh, probably boring you and repeating myself, but yeah, it would, the courts would look at the facts they had in front of you. And say, was that a reasonable basis for imposing that condition? Or was it pure speculation or based on? Like public outcry without an insufficient factual basis. So it really, it really depends, but yes. You could put that condition on there.
Let me do this then, uh, if you guys don't mind. So thank you. Um, I'll go ahead and open up to the public. Is there anybody here from that community or the community around it or the HOA that could speak to this?
May I ask?
I'll, I'll go ahead and close the public. Go ahead. Thanks.
On the last time we proved this. Did they have two-car garages? The former ones, do you recall that the former ones have two-car garages?
Were you speaking to the projects that I presented to the, or that have been previously?
Just in the villages.
Some have two-car garages and some have one.
That we approved already.
Correct.
Well, we didn't approve them.
Did they have stipulations on the number of cars on those?
We didn't approve it based on safety. Fire safety, but it got overruled.
I think there was one that you approved like a month or so, a couple of months ago. And I think it had a two-car garage.
We know if that one had a two-car garage or a one-car.
I don't actually remember. I don't know.
I have a question, comment. For, for a finding, if you look at the last page of our packet. There's a short-term rental narrative for this. And the second sentence is. The use by renters should provide no noticeable difference from our personal use. Most renters will be a single family with one vehicle. So it seems to me we could, we could make a finding. That this is, this will be a short-term rental. For a family. Just like the owner. No noticeable difference in impact. One family, one vehicle, because. That's all they've got space for here is one garage.
Well, what was the wording you just said? It was one car from time to time or what'd you just say?
So the, well, I'm reading this narrative, the use, and I suppose this comes from the applicant. The use by renters should be, provide no noticeable difference from our personal use. Most renters will be a single family with one vehicle.
Most. So that, you know, if I'm that person in, every time from now on two show up, you know, that's. That is within what I just said there in the paragraph.
Yeah, it, it implies that the applicant is a single family with one vehicle. And the applicant is making representation that they don't intend. The impact to be much different from what they are.
Right.
So I don't. It seems to me we could have put a, uh, condition on here that it be for one family with one vehicle.
Most of the time?
All of the time. But we're not increasing the impact. And that would be compared to. Five people show up in five vehicles.
That's what happens.
Right.
Courtland.
Yeah, please.
Um, based on, so we looked at fire occupancy in the previous, or it was mentioned in the previous application about fire occupancy, uh, being limited at ten. This one has no information based on that. Um, is there sufficient evidence here for us to make a limitation on the number of people that we would allow for? A nightly type application?
The previous one. In the staff report talked about how the fire district had said. There is a ten-person limit in non-sprinkled dwelling units. And. It made me wonder with this one, has it even had fire review yet? And if so. Did they not say anything about that because these are sprinkled? Do we know? I don't know those facts.
Very good.
So that, to me. That would be something I would recommend. To not base anything on because it is conditioned on agency. Review requirement, review agency requirements. So the fire agency, the fire district will have to review this. And if the fire district. So if the fire district reviews it, if they feel a need to put that condition on here like they did in the other one, they would do so. I would presume.
Can, was that looked at, Tim?
I just, I'm looking at the project right now. Um, fire has not yet reviewed it. I can tell you the most recent project in this neighborhood. What they said on that one, let me, let me find it here. It was a project called, uh, last name Hayman. And it was for short-term rentals in, uh, on, along Wolf Lodge, Wolf Lodge Drive in the same development. Their review states the following. There is a ten-person limit on non-sprinkled dwelling units. Please provide a fire extinguisher. Left in plain sight. CO and smoke detectors. Um, I, I. Always thought that these had sprinklers in them.
They don't. Uh, and if I can comment to the two previous applications that I had brought before you, the fire district had made the same recommendations that no more than ten occupants. When we put in our staff report that these are, that these approvals are subject to all review agency requirements. We don't issue the conditional use permit until we've received feedback from every review agency. If that helps alleviate any of that concern, I guess.
Yeah. And so, but again, by virtue of the language in there saying. At least the staff recommendation is. This recommendation is subject to all review agencies. It would be part of the conditions of the conditional use permit if the fire district gives that same condition again in its review.
Yeah. So probably numbers is the issue as much as, you know, you could maybe say one family or like the owner, some language like that. Like Commissioner Burton was saying. Yeah. Yeah, we had to be consistent. So maybe it's just cars.
Yeah. To me, I would recommend that instead of. Wading into the question of what's a family or, you know, I'm going to get four people.
What's a car?
Yeah, to me a vehicle is much clearer than, you know, what if.
One vehicle and come in a bus, you know?
Well, if it fits in the garage, right? That's. You know, something you're thinking about, right? But if your concern is that they park in the garage and not contribute to the parking. In the neighborhood outside of the garage, then that's. Pretty clear-cut a vehicle in the garage, right? If that, if that's how you choose to go.
Okay. Um, would anybody venture? A motion?
I move that we approve conditional use application. CUP twenty twenty-one dash eleven. Uh, for an STR in the, uh, villages of Wolf Creek. Uh, approximately thirty-five seventy-one North Creek Sideway. And on. That. Make that recommendations. Conditional on staff. Review and analysis and recommendations and all. Recommendations by, um. Appropriate agencies. Uh, applicable to this. Application. And that, uh, only one vehicle. Be, um. Allowed. To use it as a short-term rental. That wasn't very clear. In the garage. The all parking be limited to, uh, parking in the garage. For this STR request.
Okay, do we have a second?
May I suggest that you add the findings that that recommendation is based on?
Okay, the staff report is not adequate.
So. The staff report lists two findings there. It's up to you to decide whether or not those are.
So including staff recommendations and findings.
Yes, uh, and I base this recommendation on staff recommendations and fi- findings and analysis.
Um, if you want to add additional findings to support the parking limitation, you might.
Also, um. Consideration for parking in the garage is also based on the narrow. Um. Streets in the development that don't, uh, aren't conducive for parking on the street and for other limited guest parking.
Okay. Sounds good. Alright. Um, any further discussion?
Just for clarification, was the second in agreement with the new findings that were listed?
Who seconded it, by the way?
We needed another second. I seconded it again.
I'll take that as an affirmative to the first. Okay, any additional comments? Okay, all those in favor of the motion? Any opposed? Motion carries as stated. Thanks, Shada. Okay. Um, I'm going to go ahead and open it up for public comment for any items not on the agenda. Does anybody have anything to add to tonight's discussions? Come on up and please state your name and address.
I'm Carol Campbell. I live at seventy, um, three seventy-eight. Fourteen fifty north in Huntsville. Um, I may be jumping the gun. I received this postcard about. Westwood Homestead subdivision indicating it would be discussed tonight. But it's not on the agenda. So I'm not sure if I need to wait to make my comments or is this the appropriate time to make them?
Yeah, that, so that subdivision, um, was taken off the agenda.
Okay, so wait till it comes back on the agenda?
Sure, yeah, or, or you're welcome. Yeah, or you're welcome to give your thoughts now as well. But, uh, yeah, we'll be on an agenda probably next month.
Okay, I can just wait. Then it'll be fresher in everybody's mind.
There you go. We'd love to hear your comments though.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for waiting.
Yeah.
My name's Stephen Clark. I'll solo at seventy-three seventy-eight east fourteen fifty north. I'm hoping that, uh. You will entertain my comments in the spirit in which they're intended and not try not to be offended by what I say. I'm constantly reminded of the comments of Aldo Leopold when he wrote that. One of the penalties of an ecological education is that one lives alone in a world of wounds. And sees the signs of death in a community. That believes itself well. And refuses to be told otherwise. I notice on one of your. Objectives, I suppose, appear. Your interest is in trying to stay abreast of changes and to maintain a secure environment. I would like to suggest. In the spirit of. Progress and cooperation. That this commission and previous commissions have failed in that responsibility to stay abreast of changes and to maintain a secure environment. My experience with county commissions and planning commissions is that they tend to ignore science. They tend to even refuse to. Investigate science. In spite of the fact that the science is very overwhelming. That, uh. We're in for major kinds of changes in our climate and our moisture, soil moisture, our streams. And I'm not quite sure that you guys have really stayed abreast of those kinds of changes and. Made yourself aware. Of the kind of information that's available that should be guiding your decisions. I would encourage you to, to look into that. To take a look at the studies that show that we're on a treacherous path. And that, uh, whenever you guys. Approve, uh, these developments without consideration for. A lot of kind of environmental issues like availability of water. Well, water, stream water, changes in temperature, destruction of the lake, all kinds of things. That you do it like someone who is heading off into, uh, the desert without making sure that you have enough gas in your tank. That decisions are made. Without proper kind of information. Um, I would also suggest that, um. Well, my father was born in Ogden Valley in eighteen eighty-seven. And, uh, I got a chance to move back up there a number of years ago and. Wanted to live in a very desirable place. My observation has been in the last few years that the decisions of commissions. Has been to make the place less and less desirable for. Current residents and for anyone who chooses to move there. With the lack of concern for availability of water and. With the lack of concern for availability of water and all of these new kinds of short term rentals and all those kinds of things, it's making it much, much less desirable place to live. So I would challenge you to consider these things in the future as you make these decisions and to do it with the best knowledge available. Now, in relation to another topic, I would like to see you guys consider.
I, I just have to butt into, please try to keep it to three minutes.
Just.
Thank you.
Just a second.
Sure.
We are constantly facing our, our area with target shooters and pointers in the backyard. I'd really like you guys to consider passing an ordinance that would prevent target shooting and plinking in Ogden Valley. I'm not here to suggest that you eliminate hunting opportunities along the foothills. I would suggest, however, as a matter of your, your approval of developments, that all of these developments that take place upon the foothills destroy critical deer and wildlife, elk habitat. And remind you that wildlife is one of the most important revenue producing resources that the state has. And yet every time we approve a development that goes upon those foothills, we destroy that resource. If you would please consider passing an ordinance that says that target shooting, plinking in people's backyards is no longer acceptable. I think it would make the valley a much more desirable place to live. And again, I don't want to interfere with legal hunting. That's not my objective. I'm just talking about people go out in their backyards and start cranking off rounds with their nine MM's. Thank you for listening to me and please forgive me if I offended you. That was not my intention. But thank you and I appreciate the work you guys do.
Thank you. Okay. Anybody else from the public? Okay. Not hearing any. Do we have any remarks from the planning commissioners?
I do.
No?
So just to address some of Jan Fulmer's concern, legally, if the Weber County Commissioners had the will to put a moratorium on short term rentals, would that be a legal avenue for the county? Would that be, would they be able to do that if the commissioners felt it was important until they felt like they could get a handle on the short term rental issue?
Moratorium meaning a temporary halt to it?
Approval.
My recollection is that there is a six month limit, I think, on a moratorium. So they, I believe I'd have to look into it, but they could consider something like that. They do have some flexibility when it comes to short term rental ordinances. And, and to mora- to a moratorium, they, they could do that if they, if they met the requirements for that, which I can't remember offhand.
Thank you.
Question, I think. Thought we heard a number tonight of approved licensed short term rentals in the valley. Anybody recall what that number was?
Thirty-two.
Thirty-two.
Thirty-two. So we.
Which, which by the way, makes absolutely no sense. I mean, I, I manage at least thirty-two myself. So I know that there's lots and lots of licensed nightly rental taxed units. Just within Moose Hollow, there's eighty of them or more, I'm sure even more. So I'm not sure where that number comes from, honestly.
It seems we already have a moratorium in place. If it's not allowed in the zoning, it's not supposed to happen.
And I, and I think it's the illegal ones that are the problem. You know, it's the ones popping up in a neighborhood that has 12 cars. That's the biggest problem we have anyway. I just had two comments. So one, I have to really give kudos to emergency responders this weekend. We had a ridiculously dangerous fire from plinking and guns. And thank God for Weber County and their emergency responders. They really, really saved the day. So kudos to those folks. And secondly, I, you know, while the comments tonight were well received and appreciated, I, I really do have a lot of faith in this commission and its sense of volunteer, volunteerism and best intentions. And I know we're up here trying to do our best and, and I would encourage you just to keep it up and, and to stay involved and try to make the best decisions for our community as possible. I, I really appreciate everybody's help. Anything from planning director? Pro-TAM?
Right, right. No, we, we just want to thank you as a planning commission for your volunteer service and always being here. Whenever we have these public meetings, we like to have as many members of the public be here as possible so they can see what the planning commission does. You, there, you are volunteers. You don't get paid to do this. It's, you're taking time out of your lives and away from your families to be here. Also, just, we hope that the members of the public understand that you're, you're a recommending body. So you don't actually create or approve the ordinances, but the county commissioners, who are the elected officials, they, they approve those and you, you as a board obviously provide a recommendation. And that's, as far as administrative items go, as we've seen tonight with short term rentals, there, some of these are, are rights that landowners have that, that have to be approved. And so we, I mean, we're going on two hours now. I think you have really looked at each of these applications in, in pretty good detail. So we appreciate you and all that you do.
Yeah. Well, thank you to the staff.
Sure, go ahead. You know, it was brought up about water. This state is not doing a thing, it seems, about water and collecting water on wet years. And they're not putting any more dams in. They're not. And the state is growing like you can't believe. You know, they're leaving California like mice leaving a sinking ship. I take the Wall Street Journal, just in 2017, a million 700,000 people left California. That was in 2017. They're coming up here with bags of money too, because they're selling their properties down there. And my daughter's a real estate broker and, and it's really tough on the real estate market because there's nothing almost for sale. Because they can come in and, and outbid anybody and it's cash. And so, but the state with water, there, I went to a meeting one time down in Salt Lake, not, oh, sometime back. And they said, water in Utah, 17% is used by households throughout the state. The rest is used by farmers and they're not saving water here. They need to make, put up more dams or something like that. Because, and they're not addressing that. It isn't happening. The environmentalists don't want any more dams here.
Okay. Thanks, Jack. Courtland, anything from legal?
Nope, nothing further.
Okay. Thanks, everybody. And I adjourn.